Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us for the Wednesday, November 29th Workshop of the Village Board. This is a working session. Thank you for joining us in person and online. Item number one is the opportunity to request a vote to add or modify agenda items. I would like to request to add two things. One, a menorah lighting request. And notification of a micro-business application. And I'd like to add them at B and F. Any objection?
No.
Okay. Next announcements, I don't know that there are, oh, tree lighting on Saturday at 2:00. 4:00, rain date on Sunday. So come on down, Santa will be coming in on the fire truck as usual. Be a good time. Be good. I just said, I just said no, any, any opposition? Okay.
Is there a leaf pickup?
Yeah, there is, there is yard waste pickup this week. I think it's among the last ones. Getting close there. On Thursday with garbage. And some folks have asked questions about whether leaves could be picked up from bins, not only paper bags. We did confirm with Royal that they will pick up with bins, but they will not pick up plastic bags. I'll dump out a bin. Their preferred method is they use a paper bag. Okay, so moving into board business. Item 3A, discussion of policy amendments. And I'd like to start with a statement. So many in the village are aware that since June, our police department, our village staff, and this board have been dealing with harassment from a so-called First Amendment activist. In recent weeks, his activity has escalated, and he's been joined by other so-called activists. Like him, these actors, charlatans really, make money from YouTube by creating antagonizing interactions with public officials, filming them, heavily editing the recordings, and then pushing them out as quote-unquote "proof" on social media that local officials are not properly conducting their duties and are not adhering to the spirit and letter of the Constitution. These actors have not only disrupted our public meetings, but they have harassed private citizens at our community day in front of our public buildings and our staff in their offices. When these videos are shared out on social media, these actors and their handlers prompt their followers on YouTube to harass public employees and elected officials with aggressive, even threatening phone calls, emails, and social media posts. In the days after videos are posted, village offices are inundated with what can only be described as disgusting, degrading messages. The degree of misogyny, racism, violence, sexism in these contexts is simply nauseating. Indeed, I have received threats on my life and threats on my family's lives sufficient to warrant engagement by the DA and the FBI. In these fragile, chaotic times we are living in, this isn't a game, and it isn't a joke. It's reckless, and frankly, it's a form of domestic terrorism. The disruption of these actors is jamming up the work of local government. It's creating a hostile work environment for our employees. Ironically, when public meetings must be adjourned because of the actors harassing and disruptive displays, there is a chilling effect on local citizens' ability to participate in their village government. Their voices are silenced on issues that affect their daily lives. These are issues that are real and legitimate and that matter to our quality of life every day. Government has to function, and civil society must be preserved at every level, right down to villages. So to address these challenges, tonight we have before us policy revisions that we hope will help us provide a safe and productive working environment for our staff, allow us to protect public records, and to conduct the people's business in public sessions that are businesslike, professional, and move the village forward. We are a working community, not a sideshow for profiteers. We recognize and value a person's right to free speech, but there are appropriate times, places, and manners in which those rights can be expressed. It is well settled that government officials may impose reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions, so long as such restrictions are content neutral. So the policies that we're considering tonight relate to the access to village facilities and designating areas and functions within our facilities as public and non-public. They state clearly where and under what circumstances recordings can be made within our facilities and what consent is required. And they address public comments. The board is required to take public comment in public hearings. But doing so is optional for all other board sessions under the New York State Open Meetings Law and Public Officers Law. Further, a municipality may quote "provide rules for speakers to follow." If these policies pass, we will now take comment at the discretion of the board in all workshops and monthly meetings. That discretion will be content neutral. The policy drafts have been developed with guidance from the legal team at the New York State Conference of Mayors and after exhaustive case law research by the village attorney who's here with us tonight, John First, to ensure the public's right to free speech is not unreasonably infringed upon. These policies are well within the village's rights to preserve the properties under its control for the purposes to which they are lawfully dedicated, those being to provide services and operations to village residents, to act as the repository of vital records and other government records, to house the operations and records of the Village of Cold Spring Justice Court, to provide a safe workplace environment for village employees and volunteers, to provide a place of assembly where thoughts and ideas can be exchanged among citizens, where public questions can be discussed, and where elected and appointed bodies can conduct public business. So these are available on the village website. The trustees have them before us tonight. After we take our votes, what, what we determine will be memorialized in the trustee handbook. Any questions for the village trustees, excuse me, the village attorney or any discussion among trustees?
Well, I don't have any questions of the village attorney, but I will make a comment on what you said, and very well said. I think, you know, people should know that the work environment has been stressed. We have all felt under siege and attacked. Getting emails with racist undertones and sexist demeaning and threatening phone calls is unacceptable. That doesn't push legitimate issues forward. That's not a means to aggress or regress your, your local elected officials. It's, it's terrible. It's gross. It's unproductive, and it needs to stop. And I hope that this is a means of, of squashing that behavior. And to go back to our meaningful discussions where our community feels comfortable enough to come and talk to us about issues that they have in this village as neighbors. So I feel a bit emotional about it, to be honest, and I think it's time that we, we take all the measures that we can to make sure that this behavior stops.
Well, would you like to make a motion regarding the access and recording policy?
Yes, what a motion would be to stop, do that. I will make a motion to adopt the Village of Cold Spring access and recording policy dated November 2023.
Second? Second by Eliza, all in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? I vote aye. Someone might make a motion regarding the guidelines for public modifications to the guidelines for public comment session in the trustee handbook?
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed policy modifications in the trustee handbook on public comment section zero.
Second? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
That's for any discussion, all in favor? You all said yes, and I, I say aye. So both pass.
Check the couple of moving forward, make sure there's clear signage.
Yes.
As far as, you know.
Public and non-public papers.
And then it sounds like we're, you know, make sure the final version is posted on your website and maybe posted on the bulletin board, so that way it's available, it's out there, so people are aware of it.
I kind of recommended that it go on the front door.
Yeah.
Can I ask you a question? Since the, the protocol on public comment involves a vote, should we have, is there like a standing agenda item that we should have about? I don't know, is there any changes that we have to do to our, to our meeting format or to the, the writing of our agenda?
Yeah, so the only change would be if you want somebody, like, I'm looking at this agenda right now, and there's nothing here for public comment. But if somebody wants to make a motion to, to hear, take public comment on agenda items only or any items, you can certainly make the motion on a, on a meeting-by-meeting basis, and as long as the majority of the board agrees, then you guys can decide what you want to do. You can have no public comments, you can have public comments limited to agenda items, or you can take all public comments. And when you do take public comments, it would just be subject to your rules and procedures.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your, your time and help. Okay. Next item is authorizing the mayor to enter into service agreement with T2 and the IRS software system. From here on, it's sort of the, the Eliza show. This is a work, a week where we're talking about a lot of things that you've been focusing on and moving forward.
Right away. This is all part of the parking plan, and this software agreement is part of the whole system that will manage our backend for parking meters and ticketing. We've already signed the software licensing and service agreements for UP Safety, which is the service that provides us with handheld like devices for our officers and for integrated technical systems, which are the kiosk systems and service that connects our kiosks to our park mobile service and collects fees for meter parking. So this is an additional service agreement that you have to sort of check to get the system that's the backend for our offices. So our administrative staff can review the data of how many parking meters are used, what, what the revenues are, ticket information for the justice court, and our officers will be able to upload photos of evidence from ticket violators. And the justice service, the justice court will be able to just pull those up through this system. So this is all setting that up. Our legal team has reviewed the service agreement and brought up several concerns with needs for clarity on the software ownership. And some of those were, you know, the need to clarify that there will be no third parties who own this software.
Or on the data, right? Or on the data.
That's right. Establishing the village's tax exemption is pre-billing. Like defining what the requirements for record-keeping are. And the requirements for the village to receive copies of T2's insurance protections. And then, like, we had some concerns about the fees in case there's interrupted service. And defining when the year contract begins and what the renewal dates are. And then how we would terminate from the village side short of a breaching contract. So those things were not defined in their service agreement. So our legal team put together a rider to address the most serious of those legal issues. And so however what we landed on between them and us was that we don't require T2 and IRS to pay us redress if there's a break in the service or like an interruption for a period of time. Same, and it's like if Central Hudson Service went out, it wouldn't get paid for the service that was lost. So we've got the rider, we passed it to their legal team, they accepted the most important of the requirements that our legal team said were necessary. And so before us, we have the service agreement with a rider, and I would like to make a motion to authorize the mayor to enter into service agreement with T2 software system with that rider attached.
Before, there's a second, just a clarification. What we're moving tonight, this, this version, I understand it to incorporate all of the changes that John and Jeff Scully worked through with T2, but for the and/or, which we need to make sure is modified in the final version.
That one was modified. That one was. That was the one that was modified. There were two, maybe, that were not, but that were.
So once this, this and/or is accepted, then, then the, known by us, this, this draft is, this draft reflects the final language?
That's right.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying. So Eliza has a motion on the table. Any discussion?
Yep.
Thank you for doing the hard, this has just been a mind swirler, so thank you. I'll make a second. All in favor?
Oh, aye. Any opposed?
Once and closer. And while we're talking about parking, so have you give us a progress report toward resident parking permits and meter parking?
Yeah.
A lot of folks misunderstand, we, there's a lot of things that have to happen before it all goes into place and before it's all in action. So Eliza is going to tell us how we're getting there.
Right, so at this point, we have gone through the code update process, and the board has approved the code. However, we're still working with our administration, administrative staff to send the finalized draft to New York State. So we can't actually put anything into motion until that's done.
Until it's accepted by the Secretary of State.
Exactly. In the meantime, our administration is preparing the application process for resident parking permits. And that's why I make sure everyone knows, like, we're not selling permits yet. And if you see poles that are empty on your street, they're, the highway department's put all the poles in for the signage, but we have not put the signage up yet. If there's no sign, you don't have to follow anything, like, just follow the signs that are there. But this system doesn't turn on until you see signs on the street, and we won't put signs up on the street until we have sold, we've notified all the residents. And we'll be notifying residents by sending physical mailers with applications and instructions to all of the eligible residence addresses. We'll be sending out email, we'll put it up on the website, we will communicate through the social media and potentially even through newspaper ads if the board wants to do that. So we are going to communicate a lot before any major changes happen and before anybody gets a ticket because they don't have a permit sticker on their car. So if you don't see anything, and if you haven't gotten any notifications, nothing's happening yet, and we're still working on the process in the backend. And if you live on one of the parking plan eligible streets, your household is automatically eligible for two permits by request when it starts. So rest assured, we're working on it, and you will be notified. So as I said, the signage poles are up. The signs for the resident permit parking are being priced out and will be ordered shortly. We're just, you know, getting the final number of how many we need to order. That'll probably take about a month to print. And we hope to have those by the beginning of January. Our permit stickers are being ordered. And as soon as they're in the village and we have them, we will start to allow villagers to purchase their permits. And now that we've got the service agreement done, I'm going to start working on the backend system. So I'll be communicating with all the different technology companies, giving them all the details of our parking plan, what streets it's on, where it is, how many permits, all of these details will be uploaded to them. They will set up the system, and then I will have to set up meetings for our staff and our team to be trained on all of these different systems, including the police department for their handheld devices, the justice court for how to contact or connect to all of the ticket information, and then our treasurer and our clerks, so that they can track the information. So let's see. Once the permits have been sold and we've delivered them to villagers, that's when we put the signs up. We won't do it beforehand, we'll make sure everyone has a chance to get their permits. We'll put the signs up first on the resident side streets. Main Street meters will not go into effect until that's done. So permits are done first, we make sure our residents are covered and taken care of, and then we'll get the Main Street meters, the kiosks in place, and then put the signage up for that, invest it, and that'll be a go. So now, at that point, residents have permits, the kiosks are on, there may be some residents who somehow missed all of the information and are waiting. And we'll probably work with the, the police department to make sort of a window gap time for transition, and they will have, you know, the ideas, giving them envelopes that have the applications in them and a warning, you know, yeah, this month, you got off free, this is a notice, you need a permit, yep, if you're parking here at these times, here it is on your windshield, you'll get that. And that'll just allow a little bit of grace period for everyone to get on board. And then I'll be working with the CSPD to create an enforcement plan that makes sure that we're enforcing all the points that need to be done in both the resident parking-only areas and on Main Street. So those are all the pieces that I'm working on from here. In terms of the permit stickers, I'm pricing them out right now. And it looks like they're within, you know, pretty reasonable prices, but there is a big difference between the price of stickers that are destructible vinyl, that basically shred when you try and peel them off, which is about above a lot more. So a simple vinyl sticker would be $357 for 800 permit stickers. A destructible vinyl one would be $2,69. So personally, I feel like for our $2,200, it's probably not worth having destructible vinyl stickers, but I wanted to run that by the board and get your opinions on that, because, I mean, maybe it's worth it, but.
The concern would be someone peeling off their resident parking sticker and putting it on another car? Did we, I'm sorry that I don't remember, we, we had so many iterations of conversation. Did we land on whether the sticker will have a plate number on it?
It will not have a plate number, it will have a number that will be associated with the plate.
In the office.
Right, which we could potentially upload into our backend system. So if officers check, like, a sticker looks like it's peeling off or something, then they could check to see if the plate matches the, like, registration number of the sticker.
Are we putting it on the inside or the outside of the window?
It'll be on the inside.
So, so we don't expect someone to kind of steal one off?
Right.
It would have to be a deliberate move, but I mean.
But they could do that.
They could do it.
They could do it anyway. They, once you get.
Long car.
Well, yeah, you know, once you get the sticker, you put it, you're you don't have control.
I, I would like to trust that our residents are like 99.999% gonna like follow the rules and be trustworthy and, you know, for the.
Trickling happening in the front row.
Yeah. From the legal department.
Well, let's, I would like to bear on the side of good faith at the beginning.
Right.
See how we do, and if we, if we have to shift to that model in the next year, we do.
It's one year, yeah.
That's right.
Then I would suggest we make sure that we put it in the backend so that we can track on that one, whatever, 0.1% of person who decides to misuse it, that we can track that.
Okay.
That way.
If, if it's possible, I will do it.
It's an enforceable tool.
Yeah. Okay. So then we're all in agreement that I can go ahead with the laminated stickers that are not destructible vinyl at the better rate?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. That is it for my parking updates for the moment.
Everybody take a deep breath is the summary. We're getting there. I think this is probably one of the most complicated projects that the village board has ever undertaken, which that wasn't, because I think this, this is actually more complex than garbage. I mean, aside from a multi-year comprehensive plan, this is, this is the most complicated thing, and you have managed it masterfully, Eliza, and with such grace. So thank you, we're not done yet, but thank you for everything you did, and thank you, Laura, also for helping with communications. Okay, so I skipped, I meant to, to address micro-business we had before this, and I skipped it, so let's look at that. So we have a notice from New York State. Oh, where did I put my copy? I may have to have it handed. Okay, in front of me right here. Okay, so folks will recall that the Village of Cold Spring was the only municipality in Putnam County in whatever year it was, 2021, to approve the retail, the sale of cannabis, but not onsite consumption. The licensing with the state works very much like a liquor license. The applicant, in this case, it's a gentleman named Urban Raboy, who is a farmer in Brewster. It's a, a micro-business model, has applies for, applied for a permit for New York State. New York State is informing the village that an application has been received, processed like a liquor, liquor license, there's nothing for us to do with it at this time. The next step is for the business owner to make an application for the planning board, correct? Yep. So this is just a, an informational notice for us.
Um, I don't think they have to make an application with the planning board unless there's a change of use on the property. It did take a New York State.
Retail to retail?
That's right.
This is 137 Main?
Yeah.
So, yeah, I mean, I guess if you're, I don't think your new, new code addresses the sale of cannabis, correct? Distinguishes it from any other retail.
Right, and in the same way, like a liquor license would be like when I opened a wine shop, because it was a retail-to-retail, there was no planning board involved, it was just.
I had forgotten that 137 is already retail, yeah.
Yeah, so there should not be any planning board.
But there will be remember, what do we call it? A business not a business license, but there is a, an operating.
Will be a certificate of occupancy.
Certificate of occupancy, but there's also a, a business certificate that the code enforcement officer I can't remember what it's called right now.
Certificate of operation.
Operation.
Yeah, so go up to.
So there will be, there will be more process, but it not unlike other establishments. Okay. So that is on the website, if folks would like to look at it. I would take note that looking at the address, it's a bit of a relief to me, because I think when we look at how it's located and the state's regulation for how close these things can be to schools and churches, it's kind of a location in the village that knocks out a lot of other possibilities. So in many ways, that's a relief. Okay. Cold Spring a Glow, back to you, Eliza. What's all about you tonight?
So the Cold Spring Chambers team that manages Cold Spring Glow reached out to us to let us know what is, what they have planned. They are, they're collaborating with the Butterfield Bicentennial at the library, and so they're having like an event starting at 4:00 PM there. And then there will be the Cold Spring Pipe Band walking down with sort of carols and pipes around 5:00 PM from River Architects down Main Street. And then the Foundry Montessori is going to have, which will probably be really adorable, music and carols at 5:45 to 6:00 down at Depot Square, right next to sort of the Chamber Visitor Pool. So they requested that we secure two parking spots by the visitors' pool.
Been done.
And that's been done. There is, also in the past, we've had the highway department collect the trash bags after the cleanup, so all of the volunteers would go through and collect all the luminaria bags. luminaria bags into large plastic garbage bags and pull them to the curb. And in the past, our highway department came in on the weekend and collected them in their truck and put them in the dumpster. We haven't been really having the highway department do things like that, we're trying to sort of preserve their time, we're going into plowing season. The village did reach out to Royal, Mayor Foley did, to find out how much it would cost because our, our weekend pickups ended on this past weekend, so we don't have any more Saturday and Sunday pickups. And to have a weekend pickup on the Saturday after the Friday of this event would cost the village about eleven hundred dollars, which is really high. And I asked the village accountant how much it would cost for, to have two members of Roadways and Facilities crew come in with their overtime and their two-hour requirement for overtime on weekends, and that would be two hundred dollars in wages plus about a hundred and ten on dumpster fees, that's more doable. I also think we could get creative with this. Call me crazy, but I think that there's probably somebody with pickup trucks who might volunteer to go through and pick up all of the trash bags along Main Street on Saturday morning if they can dump them in the highway department, in the highway garage.
Well, why don't we, one or two actions, it's a good idea to look at that as a possibility, so we can give the guys a Saturday, because we are, we are heading into snow season. And then see if anyone's available as backup. It, you know, at holiday time, there may be someone who wants overtime hours, but, um, if we can do it on a volunteer basis and then have the police let them back into where the dumpster is.
Right, or is, so if the board's okay with that, I would like to reach out to the chamber and ask them to organize a pickup truck.
Yeah.
Volunteer situation.
That would be the first choice.
Okay. So I'll reach out to them on that, and I think that'd be a great cost-saving solution.
Yeah, and, and labor saving. Excited that it's always beautiful.
Yeah.
And speaking of lighting, oh.
I just want to know if the, those color, cal, calories, not calories. What do people who sing together?
Carolers. Or carolers.
That group, are they, will they be there this year? Do we know? They like roamed around and.
I don't know if it's the same one, they've only announced that there's the Monastery School doing it, so I'm not sure if, in the past, I feel like Girl Scouts singing there or.
One year, Girl Scouts did it, one year it was a group of adults.
Yeah.
The pipe band, I think the pipe, the pipe band will be there again.
Right.
Going around.
So I think they just have the pipe band, the Monastery, and I think one year they had like the depot theaters, carol, like Christmas carol people doing it, so I don't think those are involved this year, but, but I think that being established from the Monastery School singing carols will be really cute. So we're, we're going to, coming out to see if not just for the beautiful light.
Got everything on a globe?
That's it.
Fantastic. So speaking of lights and Main Street, we did receive this afternoon a request, which we receive every year, that I moved it to my desk, here it is. It's from Rabbi Abi Khor, who's a Chabad of Putnam. The Chabad of Putnam has a really cool, I think it's a really cool program, they've been coming to Cold Spring for a number of years, where they take up, they like write a large menorah each night upon a get in a different municipality, so it's, it's a moving menorah. Chabad is an educational organization dedicated to increasing knowledge of Judaism among Jews and non-Jews alike, increasing enthusiasm and commitment among practicing and non-practicing Jews. So we have approved Rabbi, Rabbi Khor for a number of years, and I would like to make a motion to approve the lighting of the menorah again on December eleventh at five P M. Second. All in favor?
Hi.
Are you, is he? Where can we? It usually goes right at the bottom of Main Street by the visitor center. And then I also know that the, the Phillips Town Reform Synagogue has been invited and will participate in the tree lighting ceremony with menorah as well, a little, a little pre Hanukkah, but happy to have as well. Okay. Bills?
I make motion to approve bills by seven one four seven in the amount of thirty-seven thousand four hundred and twenty-six dollars in trees.
Second.
Hi.
Any opposed? We have correspondence from a resident on Pine Street regarding the, a late water bill burden. This person has, does not have a history of being late in the past. I, I would be in favor of granting her a, a one-time refund on her late fee, she was a day late. A question about how her property taxes are reduced is not a village question, that's a town question, so that letter was, portion of her letter was sent on to the to the town assessor, and I believe that that's an annual process that happens in May, the ability to request review to grieve her.
Thursday and May.
Thursday and May. Thank you. How for sale? Question?
I would support that too, I think that, you know, she's thanks being sick that day, and thank you for not coming in when you're sick, is, is really my response to that. And since there's no history of lateness, I would, I would support waiting at this time.
And I would just like to remind folks that when you do come in to pay bills in the village, our staff isn't authorized to, to waive in the moment, they, you need to request that of us and we make it, so please be patient with our staff as they help you moving the bills. Okay. So we need to go. I'm sorry.
I make a motion to allow the fee to be waived.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So now we're going to move into executive session to discuss potential appointments of individuals to our standing boards.
Can I also add to the pending litigation? Give you guys an update?
As long as we have you, yes, and, and a step pending litigation. So if you're joining us online, the, the board secretary will move you into a waiting room. The only thing on our agenda after we return is adjournment, but if you'd like to hang around with us, you're welcome to.
So just be a little man.
No, no votes, no actions take, being taken, just discussion. And folks in the room, we'll ask you to step out, and if you'd like to hang around, you can. Thanks very much. And we'll just, you'll.
Recording as well.
Yeah.
You need, you need to.
Okay, trade.
So I'll make a motion to enter executive session to discuss potential appointments of individuals, standing boards, and to discuss pending litigation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I thought you'd have shot it away. No, just leave, leave him and then go to the band, there you go. No, not, oh, wait, yeah. There you go.
Yeah, and then stop the recording and say yes.